All right, good evening. I will call the order, the regular board meeting, which was duly noted on April 19th, 2024 through the posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.84. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Millard, Commissioner, for introduction of our students and staff.
Thank you Superintendent Holsman. It's my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Marshall Middle School, Henry Schmelz. Mr. Schmelz has been a middle school principal at two separate school districts for 15 years before joining the Janesville School District as the Principal of Marshall in 2020. Hank has been in education for more than 30 years. He received his bachelor's degree in social studies teaching license from the California State University of Sacramento. He taught social studies in the middle and high schools in Rancho Cordova, California in 1995. Mr. Schmelz earned his master's degree in school administration and entered the world of administration in 1997 in Modesto, California. In 2002, Hank and his wife moved to Wisconsin to reconnect with his wife's Wisconsin roots. Mr. Schmelz, who do you have with you this evening?
Sorry, we have Emily Diaz-Kozmi, Liz Antonio Jose, and Lexi Kleinheinz.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the April 23, 2024 Board of Education agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The first part of our meeting tonight is to do a reorganization, but rarely does a superintendent get a chance to have the gavel. So I am going to just briefly recognize one of our employees. I get an opportunity, occasionally the leader gets an opportunity to recognize an employee who has spent 35 years in a district, and they get to pick out a little gift that the district has, and so I'd like to say congratulations to Denise Jensen, our administrative assistant For those of you who are young, that's 1989 she began. Yes, congratulations. We very much count on her to help us as we move forward. So the first order of business is to do the board reorganization, and what we'll do is we will first elect a president, and once that president's elected, my short tenure here as leader is passed on. So we will start by call for nomination for the President of the Board of Education. Do I have a nomination for the President for the Board of Education?
I nominate Kevin Murray for President of Board of Education.
Okay, I have to say this three times, so we have Mr. Commissioner Murray. Are there further nominations for President of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for the President of the Board of Education? Okay, nominations close, and I'm going to look over to Denise to say, do we need to vote?
Yes.
All right.
So you have, it's on your sheet there, it says one nomination.
Mm-hmm.
You go ahead and read that filling in Kevin.
Okay, all right, hearing none, nominations are closed. All in flavor of those, all in favor, flavor, that's right, of the election of Commissioner Kevin Murray as President of the Board of Education, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero, congratulations.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Herda for Vice President of the Board of Education.
All those in favor of the election of Lisa Herda as Vice President of the Board of Education?
Of Vacation.
Board of Education.
I like going on vacation, so I could do that.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously nine to zero, congratulations. Any nominations for Board Clerk, correct?
I'd like to nominate Liz Paul for Clerk of the Board of Education.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? All right, nominations are closed. Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of the election of Liz Paul as Clerk of the Board of Education? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, it passes nine zero. How about Treasurer?
I nominate Greg Arbery for Treasurer.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of the election of Greg Arbery as Board Treasurer? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine zero, congratulations, Greg. So we're back to student presenters, is that right?
Safety messages.
All right, Mr. Millard, how about a safety message?
Well, we actually could have skipped that because I've already talked once, and I think if I talk twice, I get paid double then, is that what that is? Okay, general safety is the first thing to consider heading into spring. Here are some great spring safety tips to keep yourself and your family safe as you transition into the new season. Excuse me. Removing any old paint cans and paint thinners in addition to old newspapers and magazines. Your local dump station should have a place for hazardous material drop off to dispose of these chemicals safely. Consider your smoke alarms. Do you have enough in your residence or workplace? Change the batteries each spring to be sure that you are properly prepared for an emergency. Clean the dust covers of carbon monoxide detectors. Clean or replace your furnace filter. Grease can accumulate on your stove hood. Properly cleaning of this is suggested. Check all fire extinguisher needle indicators and dates to be sure they are working. Clean around your dryer. Pay close attention to any ducts or dampers to be sure that lint has not accumulated and blocked this space. Check all cords to prevent an electrical fire. Make sure they are not frayed and wires are not visible. Thank you.
Thanks Jim. 3.5 student presenters from the Rock River Charter School, Noah Coward. Did I say that right, Noah?
Noah Coward, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Holsman, School Board Commissioners, and members of the community. My name is Noah Coward. I'm a student at Rock River Charter School, enrolled in the GED Option 2 program. I started at the Rock River Charter School in January as a junior, and I'm planning on graduating early next school year. Rock River Charter has given me the opportunity to earn credits needed for graduation while allowing me to continue to participate in Craig's activities. For example, Craig's Prom, which is happening this weekend, and I will be attending. Prior to Rock River Charter, I did not have enough credits to earn my high school diploma on time. I entered Rock River Charter School with six and a half credits, and I'm happy to report that through hard work, I'll be done on time and potentially even early. I will now take some time talking to you regarding what has been happening at Rock River Charter School this month. Thirty-seven students have signed up to participate in the Blackhawk Technical College Ted Days. In addition, the school district of Janesville has a job fair on Thursday, April 25th. Our students have been working on our resume to bring them with to the job fair, as well as polishing their interview skills in order to do in-person interviews. Seniors are finishing up their credits to graduate. All students who graduate through Rock River Charter School will be able to walk across the stage in two ceremonies, one being their home high school and the other our very own Rock River Charter School ceremony. We invite you to our graduation ceremony on Tuesday, May 28th at 6:00 PM in the large auditorium at Craig High School. This location was chosen due to the amount of students who are graduating through my school. To date, over 130 students have completed all of their credits in order to earn a high school diploma. With 30 days left, I know this number will be even higher. The parenting students will be taking a field trip to the Madison Zoo on Wednesday, May 15th with the generosity of the Women's Fund grant. Every parenting student is invited to enjoy this trip with their little one. The purpose of this trip is to show our parenting students free places to take their children in our area. Last year, over 18 students and children attended this field trip. This year, 28 students are invited with their little ones. Bowling will take place on Wednesday, June 5th. All current students will enjoy this end-of-the-year ceremony at Rivers Edge Bowling Alley. This is a celebration of the hard work and dedication our students have put in throughout the year, and many students look forward to this annual event. Rock River Charter School has had its eye, oh, sorry, Rock River Charter School has had its highest enrollment over this year. Currently, 203 students attend Rock River Charter. We have had a total of 367 students enrolled with us at some point throughout the 2023-2024 school year. We are expecting a record number of graduates. Between students graduating and/or successfully transitioning to another program or school, we hold steady at a 94% success rate. The last bit of good news I would like to share, four Rock River Charter School students were selected to receive scholarships through the Adam Silhough Foundation, as well as through Blackhawk Technical College Foundation. Two graduates will receive $1,000 scholarships from the Adam Silhough Foundation, and one student was selected to receive a $500 scholarship. Another was selected to receive a $500 scholarship from BTC. Thank you for allowing me to take the time to speak to you about Rock River Charter School. I'd like to thank you for your continuous support of our school.
From the Rock University High School, Ava, I'm not even going to try your last name.
I'm right next to you.
Help me out, please Ava.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Ava Warowski. I'm in 10th grade, and I've been at RUHS for two years now. I chose RUHS because I liked the idea of an accelerated educational program, and they promoted a really close-knit community. I had trouble making friends at big schools, so a smaller group of peers really appealed to me. My current idea for a pathway to go down is the program of web software development. I wanted to go into something that could fuel my creativity because I'm really into things like art and music, and this seems like a really good outlet that I could channel that into. Throughout RUHS, I've had a lot of opportunities for success. My personal favorite highlights from this year are being a member of our Student Leadership Council and organizing and volunteering in events like our Scoopy Night and our prom and speaking at a conference for a Great World Text class. Great World Text gives us the opportunity to read a piece of literature and create a project based off of our interpretation of the book. It was a really fun experience, and I'll be participating again next year. Another class we have is called CIF or Critical Issues Forum, and representatives there recently traveled to California to present their research board game on nuclear disarmament. I'm really excited to begin taking college classes next year in hopes to achieve my goal of an associate in web software development. I took a few RUHS classes too, like Earth Science and Great World Text, and I'm excited to begin those. Our current enrollment right now is 99 students, and we're expecting 100 to 120 in the fall. We also recently had a spring open house, and many eager students and families touring the school and learning about our system and its opportunities. That's all I have, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second.
Who is the decision?
Oh, you're right.
We do?
No, but thanks though, I skipped right over that. A second was by Commissioner Dahmerhausen.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously nine to zero. 5.1 recognition of winter season high school state qualifiers. Hey, Ben and Clayton, is there, if I, would I mess up your presentation of ahead of the student athletes up here behind us?
No, I think Craig's going to go first, and then Parker's going to go second. If the Craig athletes want to come up, that's fine.
Craig athletes, can you all come up and stand behind us, please? Come on up.
You guys can sit right now.
Come on up.
I'm going to talk a little.
Hey Lily, come on over here. Lily, come on.
They're going to be our student athlete, or scholar athletes, we'll introduce them first, and then we'll.
All right, okay.
Head back over there.
Come on over here, come on, come on over here. Come on, keep coming.
Here, call us for juice.
Thank you, thank you.
I gotta do something as Vice President, come on.
Yes.
I can start rallying, I'm good at that.
I miss my last.
Is this all the Craig student athletes we got?
Yes, our gymnast.
All right, thank you, thanks.
This is all, it's pretty good.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Ben McCormick, I'm the Athletic Director of Janesville Craig High School. We're here tonight to recognize our 2024 WIA State Championship teams, and also our WA Scholar Athletes. At this time, I'd like to introduce and announce our WA Scholar Athletes. Two graduating seniors, one boy and one girl, have been named this year's 2024 WA Scholar Athletes, Lily Campbell and Bryce Sullivan, who received medals from the WA at the May 22nd ceremony we have at Janesville Craig High School. To qualify for the WA State Athlete Recognition, a nominee must have earned at least four varsity letters for the first half of their senior year, and also have a cumulative grade point average of at least 3.0 on a 4.0 scale. The program was launched in 1984 to demonstrate the positive impact of interscholastic athletic activities. Probably a little-known fact, these two are next-door neighbors. I'm guessing there must have been a lot of sports and books read in the backyard at that time. I'm going to talk about Lily, I'm sorry, Bryce, you want to come up here first? I'll talk about Bryce. Bryce is a seven-time letter winner in the sports of hockey and golf. He's, he accomplished this while having a 3.976 GPA. In hockey, he earned three letters this past season and was named Team MVP of the Bluebirds. He's also recognized as a Big Eight All-Conference, on the Big Eight All-Conference Hockey Team. Bryce is currently a varsity golfer, and has led the last three seasons. In last year's junior, he earned Second Team All-Conference honors in boys' golf. Bryce is going to attend Minnesota State Mankato to become a pilot, our 2024 WA Scholar Athlete at Craig High School, Bryce Sullivan. Our female award winner is Lily Campbell. Lily is a very, very, very rare 12-time letter winner at Craig High School in volleyball, basketball, and soccer. While we're not 100% sure how many times this has happened in Janesville history, I can assure you it's not commonplace, especially in today's world of athletic specialization. It's extremely rare to have a Division One female athlete accomplish this. She's a 3.7 GPA and is a member of our NHS. She's been team captain in both volleyball and basketball, and twice in volleyball as both a junior and a senior. What's extremely rare is Lily earned All-Conference recognition in all three of those sports at some time in her high school career. It's very impressive and almost unheard of. Lily's going to attend Winona State, where she plans to study criminal justice. Congratulations to our WA Scholar winner, Lily Campbell. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jean Welsh and members of our gymnastics team here
Hello, thank, thank you for having us. I'm Jean Welsh, I'm the gymnastics coach, and this is Stephanie Hanson, who coaches with me. I wouldn't call her my assistant because she's more of a co-coach, so she coaches with me, so she's going to hand out some stuff that we have for the kids. But these are my gymnasts over there. They accomplished an extremely rare thing for Craig, for sure. We went to state as a team for the second year in a row, and only the fourth time in school history. And this year, we finished in sixth place, the highest we've ever finished at the state meet, so that was a pretty big accomplishment. We had three girls make it to state as individuals, because you can make it as a team and an individual. We had Haley made it on vault and floor, Raya on beam and all around and floor too, right? And Alex on bars and beam and all around. And Alex and Raya were, earned individual medals as well at the state meet. So that was a pretty big accomplishment, and we had four girls make the coaches' All-State recognition, and three of them made academic All-State. That means they have to have a three-point, I think it's 3.5, grade point or higher in order to get that honor. We, these girls, I'm proud to be their coach. They're involved not just in gymnastics, if you know anything about gymnastics, it involves a lot of, it's, you have to be very determined and dedicated, and it's perfectionist kind of type sport. It's a very demanding sport, and they do gymnastics, as well as many of them, in fact, most of them do another sport as well. And also, they're involved in clubs and all kinds of various activities and stuff around Craig High School. So it's a good group, and I'm very proud to be their coach. And I'm going to introduce each one of them, and Stephanie has a certificate, and they're getting their state patches tonight. So thank you for having us, and recognizing these awesome girls. Haley Fugate? You can come over here. There's a platform. Raya Ariazola? Alexis Hansen? I saved the hard names for last. Michaela Arensthorff? And Kay, Kaylee Malaver. Great job ladies, thank you, thanks for having us.
All right, thanks for having us. I'm Clayton Krieger, the Athletic Director at Janesville Parker. Ben kind of went through what a scholar athlete is already, so I'll just go on and introduce you to our two scholar athletes here at Parker. The first one is Charlie Simmons. Charlie is a senior, summa cum laude. She was in volleyball, she's a two-year letter winner. In basketball, she's a three-year letter winner, and she also was most dedicated. Soccer, she is a three-year letter winner. And Charlie is also involved in many co-curricular activities at Parker. She's in Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, Link Crew, and we can't forget DECA, where Charlie just recently qualified for the International DECA Conference in Anaheim, where she'll be going to Anaheim, California, where she will be competing in a marketing research project for Daniel's Century. Charlie placed third at the state DECA Conference and is now in the top 3% of business and marketing students in the entire nation. Later this week, as I said, Charlie's going to be heading to Anaheim, so we would like Next, I want to recognize Senior Caden Brannenberg. Caden is magna cum laude. He was a three-sport athlete. In football, he was a three-year letter winner. His other awards included Most Dedicated Team Captain, First Team All-Conference, Second Team All-Conference, and First Team All-Region in football. In wrestling, he was a four-year letter winner. He was voted as Most Dedicated, First Team All-Conference, Team MVP, three-time regional champion, three-time state qualifier, and two-time state podium finisher. And then in track, we're assuming he's going to letter this year, a three-year letter winner. He was a sectional qualifier, state qualifier, and Team MVP. And each year, we get the opportunity to bring forward one male, one female scholar athlete each year, and we've had many, many scholar athletes that have done an unbelievable job. But every once in a while, we have the opportunity to nominate someone for the state recognition for the WIAA. And tonight is my pleasure to announce that Caden Brannenberg was selected as one of the 32 finalists for the state 2024 WIAA Scholar recognition. And just to put things in perspective, I think, you know, maybe some people that aren't involved in the athletic world may not understand what an accomplishment this is, but this year, 836 seniors were nominated over, from over 422 schools. Only four Division One male athletes were recognized with this award this year. In Janesville history, we've only had two other, two other student athletes that have earned this award. In Janesville, in Janesville Parker in 1994, Michelle Burkholder, and a lady by the name of Alex Stahlheim in 2002, from Janesville Parker. And now Caden is the third, and our first male athlete to earn this award. Charlie is going to Michigan Tech next year, and Caden is going to UW-Whitewater. Next thing I want to do is just introduce Coach Shane Fleming and Coach Joe Danner, who will talk about our wrestling athletes.
Hello, as you said, I'm Coach Shane Fleming, and that's Coach Danner, coaches with me, helps out a lot. But we're here to brag about those two up there that made the state for wrestling, so I already got a lot about Caden, we'll get to him after Braden. So Braden Gary is a freshman, 113-pound freshman, and is the first freshman to ever make it to state from Parker, which is.
Nice.
Yeah. It's a big deal, if you look at all the people that have been through that school and that program, and the board down the wall, and he's the first to make it, Caden didn't even make it as a freshman, so, I mean, so he's got one up on Caden, right? So outstanding job, Braden, and yours is a little short because you only got one-year resume, right? Hopefully in three years, I'm standing here with you and some other freshmen that's embarrassed to be up there, right? So we get to Caden, I mean, both these guys are just great role models in the room, they work their tails off. Obviously, to get to state, you have to put in the work, eat right, you know, work out non-stop, grades got to be up. They do a great job, they're a great leader for the whole student body to follow, so that's awesome. I never have to worry about if they're going to be there, just do what they're supposed to do. So Caden, he already went through a bunch of the things that he's accomplished, he was a 175-pounder this year, got to the semifinals two years in a row, one takedown away, two years in a row from the state finals, which would have been pretty awesome. But getting forth two years in a row. But getting fourth two years in a row is not easy to do, so that is an outstanding accomplishment in itself. He has, so he got fourth two years in a row. This year, he was the Big Eight Wrestler of the Year. He has a career record of 148 wins and only 15 losses in his whole career, so that's amazing. I think I had 15 my sophomore year alone, so pretty good. He was MVP three years in a row. He has the most team points in history. He has the most wins in one season at 51. He has the most career wins at 148. And he has never lost to a Big Eight opponent ever, so that's awesome. So that other side of the river, he's never lost to those guys in wrestling, so that's great. And it's been a pleasure coaching both these guys and Caden is going onto Whitewater and whatever he puts his mind to, he's going to succeed. And we got Braden coming back to lead us to get some more kids to state and keep leading in that room, right? Congratulations, guys.
Thanks to all the parents and extended family and friends. I even see Grandpa Campbell out there. Thanks, parents. Let's move on to 5.2, Presentation to Consider Approval of Employee Dental Plan.
Okay, good evening commissioners. Tonight, I am here to present to you the 24-25 School District of Janesville Benefit Renewal. Tonight on the agenda, we will be talking about the goals of the SDJ, our voluntary renewal, dental renewal, as well as our health insurance renewal. Some administrative goals that we had come up with when we started our renewal process. The first was the least amount of disruption for staff. We wanted to keep staff at the forefront of this renewal. In addition to that, we wanted to remain competitive to attract and retain staff. Our third goal was to maintain the closest plan possible while remaining within the SDJ budget and wanted to maintain a sustainable plan. And finally, our last goal was to remove the co-insurance, which is not commonly found in the public sector plans. This way, we can start to align our plan design with surrounding districts. Up first, we have our, excuse me, our voluntary benefit renewal. Employees have the option for voluntary benefits of accident and critical illness, vision, life insurance, a voluntary, yes, the life insurance, and then short-term disability. The district pays a life insurance policy and long-term disability for each employee. The renewals came in this year, there was no increases. And for our life insurance and our disability lines, we have a rate cap until next July. For our dental renewal, just as a brief overview, our plan is administered by MetLife. The plan offers $1,000 annual maximum benefit for each enrollee. We did anticipate a 5% increase, which is what the district did receive for our dental. Therefore, it appears that the employees would see approximately a quarter increase for single enrollees and about 64 cents a month for a family.
Shouldn't we stop there because the agenda item is dental, correct? Any questions about dental proposal? Or is there a motion to approve? Yes.
And you might not know this, but it's just, just from my own background information, how long has it been an 88-12 split on dental?
I've been here for nine years and I believe that it has, it has been that since then.
It's always 88-12, okay, thank you.
Motion in second? Okay Denise? Kathy and Michelle. Any other comments or questions? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously 9-0. All right. So next, 5.3 is Presentation to Consider Approval of the Employee Healthcare Plan.
Okay. So I wanted to provide you with an overview of what the current plan design is. Our district currently offers dual choice. We offer Dean and Mercy. In addition to that, we do also have an alternate plan choice called the Family Advantage Health Plan. And what this plan is, it's for those who are eligible to enroll in another, excuse me, in another health insurance. If they do so, they will be provided a payroll bonus. In addition, any deductibles, copays, and co-insurances from that subsequent plan are paid for in full. Okay. This is our second year running this. Our first year, we had 37 enrollees and we were able to increase that to 71 for the current plan year. If anyone is interested, we are hosting a webinar on May 1st to, you know, provide additional information regarding the plan.
Can, can you just tell us, or tell me a little bit more about this, this plan, this family advantage plan? Also, Lisa and I are married. We're married. And...
This has been our role ever since like the last two or three years, so don't lie.
And she chooses to go, she's not employed by the district, I am.
Okay.
And she goes to her employer and takes insurance and gets off of my plan.
So how many...
She gets...
Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
So how many ever dependents you remove from the plan, you will receive a $50 a month bonus, okay? So by removing two people, $100 a month. In addition, you are issued a card and that card, whenever you go to pay for copays or deductibles, you will swipe that card.
That would be for him, right? If he got onto my plan in this situation and we only just had each other. And we only just had each other, he would, he would get $50 a month because it was just one person hopping off of the school district's plan onto my private insurance plan because we're married. And then every time he went to the doctor, he would swipe that card and everything would be paid in full.
That is correct.
By the school district of Janesville, not my employer.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Also wanted to provide a current plan design, just a review. As you can see, our single plan, employees have a $1,500 deductible. In addition, they have 20% co-insurance for a total plan exposure of $3,000. Minus the district, district HSA contribution, the net exposure for the employee is 2,400. As you can see for the family plan as well, the deductible is 3,000, again with the 20% co-insurance for a total plan exposure of 6,000. Minus our district contribution, the total net exposure is 4,800 for a family.
The current plan design? You meet your deductible first and then... Is that in addition to the max out-of-pocket or is that, you have to meet that and then there's a max?
So you meet your deductible and then every claim after that, you're going to pay 20% of until you hit the, you know, the 3,000 or the 6,000 out-of-pocket max.
So currently, for individual, single plan, the most you'd pay out-of-pocket annually would be $3,000.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I apologize.
Because the district's giving you 600.
Yes, minus, minus the HSA seed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Our initial health insurance renewal, Dean came in at a 29.9% increase. Our brokers went back and started negotiations immediately. They came, after that, they came back with a 21.9% increase from Dean and an 18.5% increase from Mercy. And this increase is based upon the plan remaining as is, okay? So no change with the co-insurance or anything like that, everything remains the same. The district would have experienced an increase of $1.7 million.
Jamie, can you explain why we are experiencing such, because these are very large increases compared to other years? And I think it might be helpful to understand, we, we don't, we're not making these decisions. This is, can you just give some background?
Absolutely. So oftentimes, our renewal rate comes in based upon the medical loss ratio, which is comparing the amount that the School District of Janesville pays for premiums versus what the insurance is actually paying out for their patients, okay? So right now, at the end of the 23, at the end of December of '23, Dean had a loss ratio of 147% and Mercy had 127%. And so what they do is they analyze these claims and they, you know, kind of interpret expected claims and our trend, our previous year's trends, and that's how they come up with this number. So while previously, we did not experience these large increases because we were saved under rate caps. So generally, Mercy would have a 9% rate cap, Dean would be right around 13%. Those options are, are now unavailable to us.
Couple of questions, maybe CMB can answer this. You know, occasionally, in the past, we would get reports from Dean and/or Mercy about use. So we can see where things are trending, what are the most common illnesses and diseases we take care of or common. So did we experience some sort of jump in catastrophic claims that made this jump? Or what sort of evidence did you see that Dean and Mercy can claim such high loss ratios?
All right, can everyone hear me? Okay. So my, my name's Matt Chadwick, I am a consultant at Cottingham and Butler. I've been working with the district for the last seven or eight years. We do get those high-cost claim reports. There's a couple things and I don't want to get too wordy on this, but we do have and have provided to, you know, Jamie and the team on what some of the large claimants are. And these will range, so Dean had about $2.4 million of claims, of individual claimants that were over $100,000 of paid claims. So it was about 12 people and those are ranging anywhere from $100,000 to a half a million. Mercy had a similar number, it was about 2.5, ranging anywhere between $160,000 and a half a million dollars as well. So the reporting that comes back on that is, or you can look at it a couple ways. One is, are we experiencing a significant spike in high-cost claimants? Or is this to be expected based on the population size as well as the general risk profile of the district? And using actuarial tables and using a lot of other, I would say, metrics as well as reports from not just local but national carriers, your folks are consuming care about as we would expect them to consume care. I think, not speaking, you know, for Jamie on this, but part of what she had talked about was the medical loss ratio of 147% on Dean and 120 some odd percent for Mercy. Essentially, that means for every dollar of premium Dean collected, they paid out a dollar and 47 in claims. So what we're seeing is that based on the rate caps, based on the dual choice that we had had in the past, we were, as the district, protected from maybe more market trend increases than what the claims actually suggested. We analyzed the, the likelihood of claims above certain dollar thresholds, looking at proportionality of claims that we would expect on 2,500 enrolled lives, on how many would be above 50,000, how many would be above 100,000. And Janesville was in line with what many of the largest stop-loss reinsurance carriers would showcase. We use, you know, Sun Life, Voya, some of the largest insurance reinsurers in the country. So to answer, you know, your question more directly, Kevin, I would, based on the historic trend over the last three years, for sure, it would appear to us that if we compared you actuarially, the way that you are consuming care is in line with what we would expect. The amount of premium that you had paid over the last several years is under-market. And that is, I think Jamie has some examples of what other districts are actually paying in terms of premium and how that differs from the School District of Janesville. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Just a, a follow-up, I guess, that over the years, it seems like we've exhausted many different attempts to create a culture of being healthy. In fact, even at one time, we had penalties or rewards for attending whatever, this or that. But it seems like those initiatives never really seem to work. So, so evidently, what we do now though is encourage people to leave the plan. That's how we're, in my, my, that's what it seems to me, but you don't have to comment on that or not.
I would, I would comment, Jamie, if that's, okay. I, I would, I would comment regarding the wellness piece of it, right? That is a very, very talked-about topic when it comes to employer-sponsored healthcare. That is what a lot of employers are trying to do, specifically employers that are self-funded. The setup that the district has using two fully insured HMO carriers, there is not the direct one-for-one dollar savings to premium reduction that you would see if you were self-funded or another self-funded employer has. Said another way, what, the way that they are, part of how they're underwriting, and this is both Dean and Mercy, is a subset of the money that you are paying in premium automatically goes to the hospitals in term, in a, in a way called capitation. So think of it like a gym membership. If you reduce ER visits or you reduce, you know, primary care visits or you reduce some of these other more predictable claims, that is not going to have the impact that maybe a lot of wellness programs are going to put in place. Secondarily, a lot of the high-cost claimants may have been unaffected by a wellness program. Certain diseases are not linked to preventive or lifestyle-related chronic conditions. A lot of where this is coming from does have to deal with the interactivity between how hospitals and who hospitals see, well, obviously Medicare, Medicaid, other payers, as well as commercial payers. That's a whole other topic that I don't want to bore people to tears on, on how that works. But I would say that this is a conversation that everyone who's in the meetings, that, you know, myself and Jamie and Mark and Dan, and we are all talking about wellness and have definite, you know, plans on exploring and making that a further part moving forward. on exploring and making that a further part moving forward where it can actually have a positive ROI.
Thank you. Also, Mr. McCray, maybe you can work on this in the next few minutes? This one point seven million, right? Whatever, one million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, what percent of the overall budget would you say that is? You can think about that and get back to me. We're going to be here a while. Also, did you, the note on the bottom, did you mention that?
Oh, I, my, sorry, my apologies.
Go ahead.
So there is a minimum deductible amount that must be held in order to be considered a high-deductible health plan, okay? And so in order to deposit HSAs, you have to be enrolled in a high-deductible health plan. So the IRS has increased that deductible for a single from fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred and for a family from three thousand to thirty-two hundred. So that renewal, when we say status quo, does include the sixteen hundred and the thirty-two hundred for the deductible. Okay? Yes. This renewal prompted us to start exploring our options. Our first task that we took on is we went out and we went out to bid for, to four national carriers. Two of those carriers indicated to us that while they would look at our business and bid on us, they would not include Dean or Mercy. That would mean that our staff would be traveling to Madison or Rockford for even just general care. So we didn't think that that would be too employee-friendly. The other two have completely denied, declined to quote our rates. And the reason is, is because their starting base rates were extremely higher than our eighteen and twenty-one percent renewal, okay? In addition, we also went out to the ETF state plan. Again, their quote came in based upon our high utilization of thirteen percent higher than our renewal. So we looked at the option of self-funded back in two thousand and fifteen is when I believe we went to becoming fully insured. We did an analysis of what would be expected claims, our claim trend, and we had indicated that it would be a thirty percent more increase for the district switching to self-funded. Now, before I go on to my next slide, I just want to pause here for a second and, you know, and there were other options that we could have looked at. We could have looked at spousal carve-out or spousal surcharges, increased employee contribution, remove the HSA, but none of those aligned with our goals when we started this renewal. So the district administrative recommendation, in order to maintain our goals, would be to increase the deductible for a single employee to be thirty-two hundred, remove the coinsurance, and increase the district HSA contribution to be eight hundred. In addition, or excuse me, the family deductible would be increased to sixty-four hundred. Again, the removal of the coinsurance. Increase the HSA district contribution to sixteen hundred. This net, with this plan design change, the district would see a one point three million dollar increase instead of one point seven. Does anybody have questions on that?
I just have a comment. So even just with your recommendation, it only saves about, I know Dan's over there doing math, only saves the district four hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi.
On the coinsurance, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that, on dropping the coinsurance?
Sure. So, or excuse me, the current plan design, the total plan exposure is divided between deductible and coinsurance. And so what we're do, what this plan design would do is it would change, there wouldn't be the coinsurance anymore. It would all be included into the deductible of the, of the plan. So instead of, you know, currently, as I had spoken earlier, an employee would have fifteen hundred dollar deductible and then pay twenty percent of the remaining claims until they hit their out-of-pocket max. And this one, this plan design consolidates that all to the front of the plan into the deductible.
Hey, Jamie, I just want to point out, I looked at this, these numbers over with someone who really understands insurance and, you know, I, I think, I want to point out that coinsurance can be a real pickle for people because you could have, you know, a couple of scenarios where all of a sudden you're paying, I mean, now granted, there might be a max that, max that, you know, individual would have to pay, but, I mean, that really can increase what you are paying in your medical bills. And I think it's important, if people don't necessarily understand how coinsurance works, that means once you've met your deductible, you're still paying healthcare bills. And so removing it is a positive in some circumstances. I know some people will say, well, I hate it, I, this coinsurance, I've met my deductible and I'm still getting bills and I'm still getting bills and I still owe this money and it's, it can really add up. So, you know, I think it's important for everyone to really make sure they understand how coinsurance, having that on there or not, impacts their overall, what their bills are going to look like in the end.
Yes, thank you.
But to Commissioner Paul's comment, but there is a max, though. So you don't continue to pay forever, right, on the, on the coinsurance?
Correct, correct. Yes.
So there's a max, so you don't continue to pay, right? I mean, there's a max out-of-pocket.
There is a max out-of-pocket.
Right, okay, thank you. So, um, why, why did we put in coinsurance?
So that was introduced to the plan last year.
Yeah.
Again, we, we saw significant increases and a way to mitigate that cost for the employee and the district. It was, you know, a, a change that we could do to the plan.
So why did you take it? Why doesn't it work anymore? Yeah, why doesn't it work anymore? Why'd you take it out?
Well, the increase, the one, the eighteen and the twenty-one percent increase is what we could not afford. And so what we did is we, you'll see in the next slide, is we, after all of the other options were not working, our next step is to adjust the plan design.
Thank you. So, okay, so coinsurance got too expensive. Is that what you're saying?
The renewal came in, yes.
Is that that four hundred thousand dollar difference? That's the four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar difference between the one point seven and the one point three?
Yes, with the increase in HSA contribution. So, do you have it, yeah, go ahead.
So a couple of things on this. You were, Liz, I believe, you were absolutely right on, you know, the way that it's, it's broken down, right? It is, the deductible is what comes first and then afterwards is this element of coinsurance where you split the bill, you know, eighty-twenty, the insurance company pays eighty percent and you pay twenty. The way that this is set up here is that the net worst-case scenario exposure is the same for employees and families as it was previously. So worst-case scenario, the employee, the single, still has a twenty-four hundred dollar net expense and the family has a forty-eight hundred dollar net expense, which is exactly how it's set up today. To go back on a comment that was made on the coinsurance piece of it, part of the discussion that was had last year is, you know, two years ago when it was just deductible and a hundred percent coinsurance, we were, we did not have a rate cap on the Dean plan and we had, you know, a large increase or a rate cap at about nine percent for the Mercy plan. By introducing the coinsurance, the analysis was that the deductible would stay the same for people. So it would still be the fifteen hundred dollar deductible and the three thousand dollar deductible for families, but it would be minimal impact because only people who incurred over fifteen hundred dollars of claims for a single or over three thousand dollars for a family would be subject to this coinsurance. And what it did is it brought Mercy's renewal from about nine percent to close to flat. And it allowed the overall budget to maintain pretty close to flat with only impacting, when we ran the numbers, it was around eleven to thirteen percent of the overall population would have been impacted by coinsurance, okay? One of the things that happened with Jamie is, I think, a point that another person made here, which was sometimes there's that frustration of the coinsurance aspect of the plan. And one of the requests that I believe Jamie had been getting was to remove the coinsurance and go back to more of that simplistic deductible meets, and that soon as the deductible is hit, then the insurance picks up a hundred percent of the cost. We looked at at least two dozen different plan design options. Some included coinsurance, some got rid of coinsurance, some split the coinsurance from instead of an eighty-twenty split to a ninety-ten split where the employee would only pick up ten percent. At the end of the day, the rates that Dean and Mercy were given or were giving us for these different, what we call decrementals by the plan design change, this opportunity to get to, and there's a couple of things here, the thirty-two hundred, sixty-four hundred plan that's shown here also allows for an improvement, which, to get into more insurance nerd speak, the family deductible is now able to be an embedded deductible. What I mean by that is, in the past, one member of the family could satisfy the entire family deductible. Now, with this plan design, one member of the family can only satisfy the single deductible. So if you are a family, even though your deductible is sixty-four hundred, if one person can only incur the thirty-two hundred dollars of that deductible, then the insurance company picks up a hundred percent of the cost after. That is part of what the IRS mandates when they come up with these limitations on what your minimum deductibles are. So as we were going through this and to, you know, to talk about the entire team's goals of minimal disruption, this plan was able to give the same net out-of-pocket exposure that people had before, was able to meet the, the district's budget number as well as introduce, get rid of the coinsurance, which is one of the things that the employees, some of the employees were talking about, and embed the family deductible, which ideally makes it more affordable for those people who are taking any family or dependent coverage. Jamie, did I miss anything?
No, I, yes.
Okay. So, okay, let me, let me think about, I'm thinking about a young person getting into teaching for the first time. And they, they have this high, this high deductible plan, right? Okay. And what is the, let's say it's, so it's, so it's a sixteen hundred dollar deductible and then they had the, in the past, they had the coinsurance and the total plan exposure. Okay, and then they got the S, the HSA contribution. So, and under that, they paid, they paid twelve percent of whatever after the deductible was met, up until, up to three thousand dollars.
Twenty, twenty percent they would pay.
Oh, they pay, I'm sorry, twenty percent. Okay, okay. So, so I'm just thinking of somebody that doesn't have any money, that, you know, the younger person might be more, you know, a healthier person, perhaps. But, you know, catastrophic things happen. And let's say that they, let's say that they break their leg or something like that or have a car accident. And, but now they're facing, now they're facing a, sorry, I got to figure out what slide I need to go to. Now they're facing, instead of sixteen hundred dollars, thirty-two hundred dollars straight up, right, to, to meet the deductible.
When, when, if we're just talking about the deductible, when you throw in something like a catastrophic event and given even today's medical prices, it doesn't even have to be catastrophic to be significant dollars.
Right.
Using your car accident as an example, those claims are going to exceed, most likely, if there is an ambulance, if there's an emergency room, if there's any surgery, it's going to exceed fifteen thousand dollars of total build. In your scenario, that individual would see their fifteen hundred dollar deductible plus fifteen hundred dollars of the coinsurance that would be remaining. So in that catastrophic event, that individual would still have a bill of three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, minus whatever HSA seed. In the scenario here, that catastrophic event happens, they would have a thirty-two hundred dollar deductible minus the HSA contribution. So their net-net worst-case scenario remains constant. Couple other things on these plans is, one, even though the deductibles do go up, any preventive care is covered at a hundred percent where there is no hit to the deductible at all. So all preventive care is going to be covered at a hundred percent where you don't have to have the deductible. One of the other things, because we do know, you have a lot of children, you have a lot of young people, a lot of them don't go to the hospital unless maybe it's an accident or some sort of thing that happens. That is part of, and we glossed over it, but the accident plan that people have the ability to buy is another avenue that people have to subsidize that particular deductible. So there is a menu of things that in that accident or a child gets sick or breaks, you know, if you were like my son and broke his arm twice in a four-month period last year, you could get, I think I calculated out that our plan was about fifteen hundred dollars that you could get in terms of payment to really do whatever, whether it's offset the deductible or what. So there are different avenues that, that are there. I don't know if that answers your question, but I wanted to give context as to that, that shock claim.
Sure. I'm just, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about, because it seems to me that the, maybe one of the advantages of a coinsurance is to lessen the blow, the initial shock of what, you know, of something like that happening, especially to a, a young person that's just starting out, that is, you know, making, making our, our base wage. But if you've tried to find any housing around here, you know, lately, you know that it's, it's not easy even to make ends meet, even though we're trying, you know, that we try to be competitive with our base wage. So that's my concern, is that, talk about exposure, you know, we might be exposing them to, and, you know, I know this, not all of them, but certainly could, you know, they're, I, I want to make sure that we try to do our best for everybody. So, that's my thought.
So Jamie, I'm going to go back to what Kevin had made a comment and I'm going to piggyback off of Kathy, too. I mean, I think the word of the day or the word of the night might be exposure. So she did the employee side. I'm going to do the district side because there's an elephant in the room about potentially an operational referendum in November and how to keep costs down for the district. So if you had nothing changed and you have a one point seven percent, if we kept the plan design status quo and it was a one point seven percent increase to the district's if we kept the plan design status quo and it was a one point seven percent increase to the district's budget, what was the percentage increase last year, Dan, roughly? And the year before? My whole point is, it's the exposure, if I had to guess, is on an upward trend, correct?
Yes, I, I would, yes. I mean, I mean, did, did.
Did you just throw your, did you just throw your voice, Dan?
Chevy Chase in the movie Spies Like Us, right, the, the microphone breaks off, um. Yes, it's a large component of the district's budget, to go back to Mr. Murray's initial question. Now, that's probably one point five percent of the overall budget when you look at a one point seven million dollar increase. Right, but it's still a one point five to one point seven million dollar increase that we're trying to avoid. You may recall, as part of our initial budget assumptions, typically we roll with ten percent, right? And we roll with ten percent because we're also preparing for staffing during that time. If we rolled with twenty to twenty-five percent projected increases, right, that puts pressure on Mr. Gardner and his team to further reduce what is our largest expense within the district, which is staffing. Right, so that's why we choose, if you will, relatively moderate ten percent assumptions. So you may recall, we adjusted our budget assumptions because we were starting to get whispers in the wind to about a twelve percent increase. Right, and then as we continued to move forward, Ms. Brown came back and said, we're looking at the projected increases you saw. Right, so any, we'll say, increase in healthcare expense, right, we have to have an offset increase, right? And since it's staffing, that's kind of again where we go back to, so that you don't have a awful, you know, staffing process, right, we're just balancing that, which is, this time of the year is always very dynamic for us. Right, so what is reasonable, right, we get into, and Ms. Brown referenced, right, so there's not a lot of levers to push for us, right, it's premium, it's contribution, right, against the medical loss ratio versus plan design, and is HSA a component of that? Right, so there's, and Matt Chadwick and his team worked with Jamie, like, what are some of our varying options, right? This is, uh, perhaps the best, worst idea we have, right? And that's the issue with healthcare expenses.
And I, I just point that out because there's the employer side and there's the, you know, there's two sides. It's just a delicate balance, and I want people to understand that. It's just a very delicate balance between the employer and the employee.
You are correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Yes? Yes. Okay, good. All right, um, I'm very concerned about our district, uh, being able to retain well-educated, experienced, uh, teachers. Um, and as Kathy mentioned, you know, you're, you're new, you are educated, it's very difficult starting out, and teachers decide within the first three to five years whether or not they're going to stay in the district, go to a different district, or leave the teaching profession altogether. And in this nation, and throughout our state, we have a very, very serious teacher retention issue. And in order to, I, I did some research this afternoon on this topic, cause it, it's very important to me. Actually, my niece left, uh, her teaching job, uh, because of the, uh, difference, the change in healthcare that happened in her district, so, and she left her district. So, and that's anecdotal, so I did go to research, but, uh, it's kind of a new, newish topic if you research from twenty twenty to the present, which is what we really need to be looking at. And I did look at a couple of different, um, studies, and like I said, um, healthcare is one of the most important ways to improve teacher retention in your district. Um, other ways, some districts, uh, decide to pay for their teachers', um, student loans, pay off their student loans. So there are, um, many options among us, uh, around there to, to look at. But I, I would say we need to step very carefully here in terms of, um, sa- you know, saying some, in, in effect, you're saying to new teachers, we don't really care if you stay, we need to do this, um, and I don't know, I just, I just think we need to tread very carefully here, and healthcare, in my mind, healthcare is the single most important, um, issue for teachers, um, between, in the first three to five years. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like a little bit of he- help on this. The providers sit down and figure out what they think they're going to need to insure us, correct? So now we go forward and we ask to pay this bill. This is your monthly payment, your contribution before you do anything. This is what comes out of your pocket. Now we sit down, if something happens and we look at it, uh, plan design, and it works out, this money's supposed to make up the thing so that the provider makes, makes money. I got a couple of questions now. Uh, let's see, the new one. Okay, we have net exposure. Who sets twenty-four hundred and forty-eight hundred as the net exposure, is that? How does that get set? Uh, so, can we, is it variable, can we change it?
So, how we have that net exposure explained here is, um, with the plan design, we are recommending the thirty-two hundred dollar deduct, uh, deductible minus the district HSA contribution, which then would leave the employee's net exposure to the twenty-four hundred.
Okay.
But what he's ask-
Yeah.
What he's asking is, who sets that the total net exposure is tw- two thousand four hundred, could it be two thousand five hundred?
Sure, we, yes, we could absolutely.
Who sets that?
Um, well, the, the deductible is set by our plan design, and then we kind of, uh, played with the numbers for the HSA, um, to see what we could afford to increase the HSA contribution for the employee.
I believe Ms. Brown has, uh, slides here in the, coming up that talks about the different plans that our team reviewed, and different options that we looked at, and that's why we came up with this recommendation, if you wanna.
Well, I'd like to finish, if I could. The one thing about paying medical bills is they all of a sudden are a wall in your face. It shuts off your home payment, it shuts off all these others. And we know medical bills get taken to court faster than anything than that. So I'm, I'm saying, and I'm sure you did take a look at some of these other things, I'm not saying you didn't. I know I've been on the insurance plans for many years, just this year, we didn't do it the same way. So, I look at that, is there a way to taper that better? Uh, I'm not sure I'm wording this right, but a deductible, the first deductible, thirty-two hundred dollars? That's a lot of money. And you've already paid all this out of your, uh, paycheck, you know, and that. So, is there a way to look at it a little different thing, that maybe the net exposure should be a little higher? But spread out in a, in a more equal way, maybe the co-insurance could be ten percent, or back to the twenty. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, this is the first time I've seen this, and somehow I'm very uncomfortable with it. Uh, it may be the only way we can go, but I haven't had any time to think about it. And that's, that's what my concern is, are there other ways that we can do it? I'm sure you've covered some, but maybe we as board members can trip something else that nobody thought of. I doubt that, but what the heck? So that's really what I wanna say, I'd like to look at it more, and I'd like to throw some other figures in there and say, is there a way we can make it easier for our teachers, our administration, our staff, everything, to get it slowed down, you know, narrowed down, maybe low here? You know, just try to thin it and make it go longer, does that make sense? I don't know. Thank you.
Hey, board members, why don't we give Jamie a little time here, just save your questions, we, we might get some of them answered. And I have a couple of comments and questions, but I'll, let's see if we can move a couple pages.
Sure, okay, thank you. Um, this next slide only explores of, or explains only a few of the plan designs that we had reviewed. We reviewed adding co-insurance, adding co, copays, uh, ER visit copays, um, office visit copays, increasing the deductible, moving it down. Um, what was within our budget, as you can see, is, um, the recommended plan. When looking at status quo, um, you will also see that the employee, um, premiums would have gone up significantly with this plan as well. Um, so in order to maintain the cost lower for the employee and for the district, um, you know, we have our recommended plan. This is just an outline of the current versus proposed. Again, you can see how the, uh, current plan is compared to the proposed plan in the single and in the family plan. So I just wanted to go over a scenario with you. Um, Jack is enrolled in single coverage, and Jack falls down while rollerblading and goes to the ER. Total cost of the bill is ten thousand dollars, and the, with the current plan design, the, um, the employee would feel the fifteen hundred dollar deductible with the twenty percent co-insurance. Minus the district's HSA contribution, the employee would have a net exposure of twenty-four hundred. Um, with the propos- sorry, oh, um, with the proposed plan, uh, the deductible would be met in, in the beginning. However, with the increased contribution, the employee would still have a twenty-four hundred dollar bill.
So I have a question about the math on this particular slide, slide thirteen. Um, on the current plan design, so you start with, uh, six thousand dollars, right? That's the total cost of this particular scenario?
Uh.
Right?
So it's ten up here?
Ten.
Oh. What the heck happened?
Nope, there, there was an adjustment to the slide.
But still, uh, even the current plan design, well, that doesn't, uh, so my question is, so ten thousand dollars, you take off the fifteen hundred, right? And then you calculate the co-insurance? Or is it co-insurance of the, the total? Cause the math is different if you do it either way.
So, the employee is responsible for the deductible first, the fifteen hundred, then the co-insurance, they are responsible for that remaining bill of twenty percent until they hit their out-of-pocket max for that, for, for their plan.
The twenty percent maxes out to another fifteen hundred dollars? So the fifteen hundred of the deductible, plus the fifteen hundred of the co-insurance is the three thousand dollar out-of-pocket?
Actually, it's seventeen hundred, but.
Well, it caps it, it, it'll cap it to fifteen hundred, yeah.
Thank you.
Here's another example of, of family coverage. Again, the deductible met at the beginning of the current, excuse me, in the current plan design, the deductible is met with the co-insurance. The total, um, employee bill would be forty-eight hundred, in the proposed plan, um, this, they would experience the same thing. Uh, the, the same total net exposure. Here's a comparison of how the monthly premiums would be for the employee. Mercy on the left hand, and Dean on the right hand. Next steps for the benefits department is, um, pending board approval, staff would be notified, um, regarding the benefit plan tomorrow. Um, April thirtieth, we will hold a webinar for staff, um, to walk them through the plan, um, ask any questions that they may have. As I stated previously, uh, May first, we would be ho- hosting our F A H P webinar. And May sixth through fifteenth, we would hold, hold open enrollment for staff.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, so this is, so this part right here kinda gets me. Um, because, because I feel kind of, uh, you know, held over a barrel here, and, uh, I don't, I mean, you've seen all these, I mean, all these questions tonight, and, you know, about, um, and I know what you're thinking, you're thinking, you don't have any choice, so just, you know, vote. But, um, but we didn't have, and I'd asked for this, a meet and confer about, um, benefits. I asked for this, we asked for this last summer, I asked for it a few months ago, and, um, you know, and because insurance is a real problematic area, um, for our staff and for the decisions that we have to make. And I know that maybe the result would have been the same, possibly. I don't, I'm not, I'm not questioning, um, you know, the efforts that were made to try to put, to try to put together as, as good of a plan as possible, but, but, uh, you know, we've got to listen to the concerns of our staff, um, and, you know, and involve them, I think, in the problem solving. And, you know, or at least listen. I know that technically negotiating over ben- benefits is supposed to be illegal, but listening to people is not, not yet. So, um, I'm also a little concerned that it didn't go through committee first, and, you know, give us a chance to chew on it for a while. I feel like I've been, um, force-fed a, a lot of information, and we already know how much I love insurance. Um, and, uh, and I'm also concerned about the impact it's going to have on new and young staff. I know that this is not necessarily, um, and I know you take, took this into consideration, you care about this too, but I'm concerned about our salaries not keeping pace, um, you know, with the cost of benefits, I know everybody in this room cares about that. Um, you know, if we're not, we're not going to attract, we're not going to retain people, uh, like what Commissioner Johnson mentioned, um, in her, uh, with her anecdotal evidence, um, that, you know, it's really important, we've already got a teacher shortage, and this is, um, a real problem for a lot of teachers, as to whether or not it is worth it to even stay or go into it in the first place. I'm also just worried about, you know, we talked about exposure, and I, 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 uh, understand, you explained why all of the exposure is now in the deductible instead of spread out between deductible and co-insurance. But, you know, we're talking about a, um, I'm talking about a profession here where, where, you know, teachers are exposed to, staff is exposed to everything that comes through the building, it's a high-stress job. Um, we've got buildings that don't have poor ventilation, not that we aren't trying to work on it. And so we've got people that are going to need, um, they're, they're, I mean, as we've known, they use their healthcare, they have to use their healthcare. And so, I, uh, uh, I don't know if this will go anywhere, but I don't, I don't even know if I can do this. Uh, but I would like a motion to postpone this until May, I make a motion, postpone this until our next meeting, on May fourteenth. I know that throws off the schedule.
That's okay.
And I'm not trying to make it impossible, but May fourteenth is my motion.
It's, uh, not quite ready for that, cause we don't even have a motion on the floor yet.
Motion, just a motion. I can motion to postpone without a motion to accept.
May fourteenth, which is our next meeting.
I have a question. Um, what would you like to see happen in that time? I just think it's important that we understand the rationale for the postponement. I just think it's important that we understand the rationale for the postponement and the expectations going forward.
Thank you, that's a great question. I would like to have conversations with staff. And, you know, as opposed to being notified, I would like them to be part of the conversation into what's going to happen. I would like to, I would like to see, I was given a couple of possible things that could alleviate some of the impact it might have on staff by a couple of staff members. I don't even know if these are good ideas or plausible, but they are ideas. And so, so that's, and again, we might end up in exactly the same place. But I think that, you know, if one thing we learned about the, and I know these are two separate issues, the calendar discussion, right? And I really appreciate it, and it was longer, and it was probably more, it was a little more difficult than just doing it. But I think that we had a good conversation about it. I think that the crafting of the calendar was better in process and in communication with our staff.
In addition to, I have a question in regards to the postponement to May 14th in regards to your next steps, that slide that you have up on there. If you postpone this to make a decision until May 14th, how does that affect your open enrollment? Do you, can you just push the open enrollment back and it doesn't affect the July 1 start date? Or how, how is moving this back to a May 14th decision affect your open enrollment? Or does it at all?
It, it does make our, our schedule a little bit more tighter trying to get the renew, the new enrollment over to the carriers in time. Generally, we do like to host it or, you know, hold it in the early parts of May. That allows, gives us some time to go through, reach out to employees who may not have completed open enrollment, you know, walk them through it, get, you know, maintain their current enrollment. And then we send that information over to the carriers, and then the carriers, you know, do their portion of getting cards sent out and things like that.
So a follow-up question to that is if it's already hard to do it with the May 6th, the May 15th timeframe that you have there, you have to understand teachers are gone then too, so it's probably going to make it even harder because they're not even in the buildings.
That is correct, yes.
So first of all, I appreciate all the comments that we got. I tried to get back to some of them because it is valuable input. And a lot of good points are made. I guess one thing I would say is, yes, it could be a burden to any individual to all of a sudden get a $3,000 medical bill. But what visit besides, you already said preventive care is already covered at 100%. I mean, I'd be hard pressed to have anybody tell me what bill from a hospital is going to be less than $3,000 that isn't preventive care. I mean, honestly, you're all, I mean, anybody would be hit with that. So that change doesn't scare me because that's what's going to happen anyway. Salaries for nobody are keeping pace with changes in any expense, let alone care. Looking at, thank you Liz for also asking for a comparison by neighboring districts. And so this came a little bit later this afternoon. If you haven't had a chance, board members, take a peek at that comparison of districts. We're always told, well, they'll go to Milton. Okay, so I looked at Milton. First of all, Milton is Dean only, there's not a Mercy option. So we do better by our employees by giving them a couple of options. The Mercy option for Milton, excuse me, Dean, sorry, Dean, is, has premiums for a family of 25740. We're going to 205. Milton is 10950 for individual, single. And we're going to 7608, or sorry, 22907 is what we're going to for the family. And Milton is 257, so we're still $30 cheaper. Individual, we're at 7608, Milton's 10950. Bo Lait Turner's 152 for individual, we're 76. Bo Lait Turner's 235 for a family, we're 229. So when you have to look at the, I mean, and also, so A, we give more options than three of the districts listed on the neighboring districts. Also, our employee contribution is the lowest. I mean, we already do so much, and to Lisa's point, the elephant in the room is we have to show the community what we're doing to be fiscally responsible. And, I mean, this is part of the, it's part of the state of things. And we can't control the increases that we're getting passed along, so I won't be supporting delaying. And I think the experts have done their job. And Jamie, you've put in so much time, you've articulated this so well. The only thing I think would be really helpful is that I didn't see that preventive care is, you know, like covered. So, I mean, you can't think of everything, but, I mean, that's a good point that maybe if the staff only read this, they wouldn't have known that.
Thank you.
One thing to add to that, Michelle, some of those numbers were just for this school year. It's not even what the, the rates are going to become, and that, all of the rates are going up. So the struggle for me is, I told the board members what my family deductible is, I'm not going to share it here. It is a lot of money. So I, it's really important that we are cognizant of the fact that no one in this room likes these numbers. We all feel them. And the challenge is, there's a lot out of our control because the beast is happening in, in the world of insurance and the world of medicine. And that is a gigantic problem that we have absolutely no control over. Unfortunately, we are all paying the very expensive price. And so I think it's, when we get angry about what is happening to teachers because it's not what it used to be, we, there also is the understanding that we have to understand that we're not choosing this. This is happening whether we like it or not, and it's happening in every school district, in every industry. And I go through the marketplace and for our health insurance because we are self-employed and that's how we find our health insurance. And our rates went up substantially this year. When I was doing research, I did the same as Commissioner Johnson. I started looking and I was finding articles, and I remember hearing them in other discussions where there were estimates that, you know, you're seeing in January and November about the impending rate hikes that we're going to be experiencing, and we're seeing them. And, you know, I know people are really frustrated with how expensive the Dean prices are. Yeah, I am too. That's outrageous. And again, that is coming from Dean. And I just think it's really important for everyone to be aware that these are not, we're not trying to get anyone, the district is working really hard to try to find the absolute best plan, and no one likes it. I remember honestly sitting in this chair a year ago feeling really worried about this conversation that's happening today because we were expecting these giant increases and they're here. And it's, it's really unfortunate, and now I'm thinking, what's next? But I, Jamie, I, this is hard. This is like your first big presentation and you're, you're just really doing a great job. It's not easy, I really feel for you. I appreciate so much that you shared all the steps you did in going to bid. And two, two of the bids said, we won't even offer you plans in Janesville. So our two major providers, and then two people did, two of the companies wouldn't even deal with it. I mean, you, you exhausted all of these efforts, and I think that's really important because we're not just saying, okay, well, this is fine, but you're looking at all of these options. And, and that, that's, even though we may not like what we're seeing, apparently the alternatives are really, they're a lot worse, not just a little worse. They're a lot worse. And, and I know they are because I'm paying those a lot worse premiums.
But in terms of the question of delay, I would support that because I did not have time to consult any health insurance experts, and I would like some time to do that. That would be very helpful for me as well. So I'm, I'm in favor of delaying the vote until next meeting.
Okay, boys and girls, we have, we have a motion on the floor to delay this until May 14th.
Go ahead. Appreciate everybody's comments and feedback. And I just want to first say thank you to our team as we, I believe, have turned over every potential stone that we have. And so what I would ask maybe Jamie to do is, is go back to slide 11, which is the one that shows our administrative recommendation. And I just, yep, that's the one. There's two things that I, no, that's 10, someone worries about it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Two things that I want to acknowledge. One is, we can make it happen if the board wants to postpone, we can make it happen. We want to make sure that on the next board meeting, right now, the board has to make a decision or has to assign a additional meeting because that's the last time we meet until June, right, then? And we have to provide our staff with an opportunity to look this over and kind of work through that. So again, that, I just would say, we can do that, but if we do that, the board has to be committed to making a decision, all right? So that would be one. Two is that, is you look at the model, what I just want to show you is that the current model shows an employee difference of $126,411. If you look at what the district's difference is, is 1,327,422. We can, we can mix the pie any way we want. But if we want to make the plan changes that are, that provide more for our employees, the number 1.3 million dollars increases. That's, it just has to go up. That's, there isn't any other way to make a plan design change unless you want to move the model to employee and make the 1.2, $126,000 go up. So the cost is the cost. And so in the plan design change, if there is a change you want, either the employees are going to pay more or the district's going to pay more. There, we, we cannot ask, or we've asked everything we can from our, our healthcare providers, they're not giving us any, any additional discounts. The thing that concerns me down the road, right? That if we add, let's just say loosely, $100,000 to the district's component, that means that that's where we start from next year. So any additional increases means we've already added $100,000 to our budget. If we add $200,000 to our budget, that 1.5 million dollars is where we start next year. Because we're not going to go back, right, next year and say, well, we're going to ask our employees to pay an additional $200,000, right? Because the district paid it this year and we're not going to pay it next year. So I absolutely get the pain, and I understand that it takes time, you know, to do that. Cunningham and Butler has been working with us since January. Unfortunately, we had a meet and confer meeting that we had to cancel because board didn't have it. We do have one scheduled for tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll have some conversations about health insurance. I think that's, that's okay. But in the end, the, the current plan, no matter what movement we make, whether it's a 10% co-pay or change the deductible from 3,200 to $3,000, whatever that movement happens, either the district is going to pay more or the employees are going to pay more. And again, I would go back and say, I feel like as a district, we have extended ourselves to the tune of 1.327 million dollars. And that's a lot. That's more than we paid last year, 1.327. Now, again, that 1.3 is 1% of our budget, but that's not how much we pay for health insurance. That's just how much this year's increase is, right? If we look at how much the current pay is, Dan, that's 15 million, 20 million, 20 million?
Not, not 20 million.
Okay, 14 million?
You're probably close at 14 million.
14 million. That's the dis, so when you look at, well, how much is that compared to the overall budget? How much is 1.3 million compared to 14 million, right? That's where we're starting to get that, it's a 13% increase from the, so if we add another few hundred thousand dollars, that increase becomes a 15%, which is where we start from, from the next year. We can, and we'll do whatever the board recommends, but we just have to be conscious that if we add something this year, it, we're not going to make a recommendation to come back and say, we're going to take it back, right? Because it'll cost more next year, which means we'd be double impacting our employees down the road. So sometimes, as difficult as it sounds, it's better to pay a little each time than none now and twice tomorrow. If that makes sense. So I just wanted to make sure we hear that.
Yeah, how many employees do we have on the insurance plans, both of them?
Right around 1,000.
Okay, that's what I figured, okay. Employees, yeah, that's not counting the spouses and all that. I understand that. I was just taking, taking a look at something. I'm not afraid to take a look and postpone it because if this is all we can do. What my goal is, is how can we soften the blow by spreading it out differently? In other words, that's a big hit if you get hit up in front for some major thing. So is there some way we can spread it out? And I'd like to look at those options if possible. Maybe there's none, but I see no reason that we can't wait and just, we have a meeting tomorrow night. Can we talk it over, discuss it, present it? And we may end up in the same place because I appreciate the work you've done, really. So that's what I might say, I won't say anymore.
Thanks, I just wanted to comment about the motion. I'm not going to support it because if we got questions, I got all the emails that I received. I got the one from the JEA president with those two questions for compromise. I'm willing to hash this out tonight. I mean, we've got the recommendation, so, okay. Let's do a roll call vote. So the motion is to?
So the motion on the board right now is to postpone the decision for the employee healthcare plan to the May 14th meeting. So we're going to do a roll call vote.
Please.
Commissioner Dahmershausen?
I support it.
Hayworth? Herda? Johnson?
Yes.
Mallard? Myers? Paul? Murray? Audrey? So the motion fails five to four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal as recommended by administration.
I'll second that.
I think based on the emails we received, and it does seem reasonable, excuse me, that with two employees working in the district, it would seem like we should have some acknowledgement that only one of them would be taking insurance and then the other one sell. I'm not sure what that is, it's not that many. But there should be some accommodations for married employees within the district, our employees together taking insurance, whatever that looks like.
No, I'm just, I'm just over here doing math.
I guess I'll just, the numbers, superintendent, related to page number 11. And so what I'm looking at is, I'm told from page 10, well, not on page 10, where was that? Anyway, the status quo was 17,330-some thousand dollars, right? Status quo, if we didn't change, it was 17 million plus.
1.7 million.
I'm sorry, thank you, 1.7. And the district's recommendation plan picks up 1.3, right? That leaves about 405 or about 23% for the employees to pick up. So the district is picking up about 75% of the increase, and employees are picking up about 25%. That's real rounding math, is that correct? Is that correct?
No.
No.
It says that we keep it the same, it's one point...
So with, with, if we were, if we were to remain status quo, where we would have the sixteen hundred dollar deductible, and then it's thirty-two hundred, with the coinsurance, we, we would see that one point seven million dollar increase.
Right.
With a plan design change, that, the carriers reduce their rates. Because it's a different plan. So now, yes.
All right, that's, that's a piece I was missing. Thank you. Well, so I got, oh, we got, I think about twenty emails. And I read them all.
More roll in.
There's more. This is important, so, if you're bored, okay. My stomach is just grown.
His tummy is so loud.
A couple, two or three of the emails, and I empathize with these individuals that have been with Dean for like, their entire life, and their family's life. And as we progress over time, financially, they're forcing people to go to Mercy and leaving their doctor. Right? That's a problem that I don't have a solution for. Other than staying status quo and paying the entire bill from the district, right? Okay. So that's, I thought that was, I mean, I've been through that myself. I'm looking for the J E A one that had two bullet points. Yep, here, here it is. Let's just, let's just talk about this, and, well, the first one is, consider reinstating coinsurance, even if it's a different percentage.
So, yes, I, I believe what she is probably asking is to remain status quo. Because our, our current plan design does have the coinsurance.
Okay. What about, and I think I saw this in your follow-up, about when we disperse HSA fees?
Yes, that is actually a discussion that we have started to have about perhaps adjusting, maybe there's certain months that we administer that consecutively, so that it's, it's in their bank accounts sooner.
Yeah, so currently, our, we distribute those HSA contributions in October and February. When we first went on this plan, we originally decided to, we distributed that right, all in August, to try to alleviate some of the costs to the employees. But what we noticed, obviously, is that we have employees that leave, and we have no way of retrieving that money back. So that's when we went to the two per, per, two-a-year distribution. We have had discussions about, because of this, very concern that you've brought up, trying to alleviate and mitigate some of that cost over time by distributing those contributions a different way.
Could not an employee request at any time of the year, hey, I, I got HSA money in there, can I have it, please?
That is not a current practice in the district.
No. Is the, is the, is the short answer for that. Right? So I think one of the things, and this was kind of a, a last minute, I'd say probably Friday afternoon or so idea, right? Is what we've not done necessarily is the cash flow analysis for those disbursements that are going out, right? I have an inkling, right, but I try not to present you with inklings, right? But to present you with real facts. So, to Scott's point and Jamie's point, right? Some of the burden is, is maybe I have a bill, but I have to wait until February, right? So can we provide some sort of, you know, it's the same dollar value? Are we just spreading it out, we'll say, from October to May? Right? And condensed timeline protects the district. We also have essentially, I believe, by October one, you are enrolled in health insurance, right? So that's where October comes into play. But certainly, can we do in October, in November, December, a January, February, March, April, and a May dispersment? Again, it's the same dollar value, but we're just providing that rather than these large gaps.
So, then I got, we got two or three in regards to Commissioner Ardray's comment about married couples in the district. I don't know if C and B or anybody has any possible solution for that, or...
So not to be the negative Nellie here, right? But you do, at times, pay me to be so.
Please.
Possibly, but then that one point three million is going to go up.
Okay.
Right? So if we're looking at a cash and lieu alternative?
Yes.
Right? Not to say that it's forever off the table, right? But the one point three is going to be certainly more. Right? So when we look at times at other districts, right? There's a couple things, right, to keep in mind. So, real quick, if I may? Right? Is one, when we look at the overall budget, and I'm talking about the big boulders in the room, right? We look at our revenue limit per member, and you may recall, we're on the lower end of revenue limit per member. Right? Which is why it's important to Commissioner Herta's point in terms of renewing an operational referendum, should the board choose to do so. Right? But even, and we took a look at this at finance, it's probably maybe at one time part of Commissioner Ardray's update, right? Is where do we rank within our peers in terms of revenue limit per member? If we don't have the revenue, when we have increasing expenses, right? That's the pinch point we're at, at this point in time. Right? The other thing, when we look at total reward, is right now we're focusing on benefits. When you look at other districts, their salary schedules may also not be as aggressive as our salary schedule is. Right? So total reward in terms of compensation, in terms of direct, and in terms of health insurance, it's a package deal. Right now, we're focusing on health. So if you look at other districts, they may not have as aggressive a salary schedule, to which then, they're incurring their costs on the benefit side.
How many, um, couples do we have that would fit this particular scenario, do you think? About?
Sixty, I would probably say we have approximately sixty couples in them.
So as an example, some districts have, let's say, a three thousand dollar cash and lieu. So if there are sixty couples, you can do the math, that's an additional one hundred and eighty thousand dollars at this point in time, therefore driving up to one point three million.
Anyone else? I'm still paging through here. Anyone? Bueller? You know, a lot of it has to do with retaining, my wages don't keep up with the health, cost of healthcare. Right? Anyone else?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So I'm looking at this chart that, about Rock County plans. And, I don't, does it, does the size of the district have an influence on costs and premiums? Because I don't see anything, any districts listed here that are really comparable in terms of our size.
Speaking actuarially, the size of the district increases the credibility of the claims. So the larger a district, and usually that point is at around a thousand total members. So for a school district, think of one that would be maybe three hundred to three hundred and fifty employees, would get you to about a thousand total members. At that point, insurance companies say that that becomes a hundred percent credible. Which means that the underwriters are going to be looking almost exclusively at the claims that are incurred by that district. I would say that the maybe bigger influential, or influence on what the rates are, are going to be more geographic than maybe size, right? One of the things that, you know, Jamie and I were talking about is, again, when you go back the various layers, you know, we are shown a renewal. The renewal is a byproduct of the expected claims. The expected claims are a byproduct of the risk, and also what the hospitals are charging. What the hospitals charge is a byproduct of the mix of clientele that they get. And so when I talk about geography, when you think Madison proper, Madison has a couple things, and if you compare yourself to Madison Metropolitan School District, they have a lot of things going for them, meaning they have the university there with a lot of young kids that don't incur a lot of claims. They have a lot of the tech sector, including Epic, that's there. Young people who don't incur a lot of claims. So, the number of people who go into the hospital systems that are on commercial plans versus public plans is a higher percentage, which means that the markup is not as high. When you go to separate areas that maybe have more Medicare Medicaid population or uninsured population relative to the commercial, then what ends up happening is the markup on the commercial has to be higher. So the rates increase on that. Does that, I'll make sure people are following on, on that. So geography does play a large role. It does not get to the point where, hey, we have twelve hundred people, get us better rates, because they're still paying the dollar amounts on the claims that, that come in.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a thought kind of out in left field. OPEB. You know, post-employment benefits? Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't have my document here that I know. So, in, at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, there's a change to OPEB benefits, right? Does it go from three to two, or...
That is correct.
Okay. So, at the end, currently, if you qualify, you get three years of paid healthcare, well, in the plan, and you can purchase more because you get a hundred and forty-seven dollars a sick day to get you towards your retirement, right?
Correct.
But at twenty, end of the school year, twenty-five, it goes down to two years. So, looking way out, does that have any significant financial impact on health insurance going, our health insurance budget going further? Which directly relates to healthcare.
You want me to take that? Given the reporting that we get from Dean and Mercy, we do not know what percentage of the overall claim spend comes from people who are in the various groupings of health insurance. So, I can't tell you that of the X percent of people who are on the plan as a retiree, they either incurred what they expected, more than the average, less than the average, because of just the reporting limitations through the, the HMOs. And that's not unique to, to Dean or Mercy by any means. I would, just on a high level, knowing how claim and age correlate, that if there was a reduction, then the argument would be, I would expect that there would be an improvement in claims relative to premium. Just based on a high, high level of, of where things are. And it depends on the number of people we're talking about. And, you know, there are a lot of other, there are other items. But I don't think that that is something that we can budget at this particular point. And I don't know if Dan disagrees with me on that. But I don't think we can account for that three years to two years to say, that's going to save us X percent.
I would agree.
Well then, why do we do it?
Why do we do...
If there's no impact? Other than having to pay for it, right? Monthly premiums?
Well, I, I, I think where I was agreeing with Matt in terms of there's no way for us to budget for usage for that retiree group and its impact on our medical loss ratio. That's what I agree with.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's no way we can anticipate that. So as you may recall, when we do our OPEB studies, right? Again, a room full of actuaries, so how exciting is that party? Right? But they're calculating, right, all that risk factor into the premium cost. Which is what, to Matt's point, is, hmm, you know, from a demographic standpoint, what's driving claims? Right? So when we do our OPEB, right? So we're obviously annually making a contribution, right? And OPEB and retirees, right, is, I would say, chapter two of this book, right? Now, if we're just focusing on chapter one, right? Because it is all part of the greater equation. Right? So we make a actuarial defined contribution annually, right? So we have expense incurred and contributions on behalf of our retirees. We have an implicit rate subsidy, right? Which is essentially a discount in terms of our expenses for current active employees, right? Because we're subsidizing the retiree component of health insurance. Right? So, it's as exciting as school finance, meaning it's complicated, there's a number of different levers, right? And I think you'll probably have information forthcoming, because Superintendent Holtzman, myself, Jamie, and Scott have had these discussions. And when I say forthcoming, it's not next week, it's probably, you know, it's a little bit down the road. But certainly, it's a component of the equation.
Thank you. God darn it, I should have wrote it down. We have a motion in a second? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the motion is?
The motion is to approve the employee healthcare plan effective July first as presented.
Oh. I, now I do remember my question. Pay, pay in lieu of, from what I understand, this is now an acceptable practice? To pay people instead of giving them insurance? Is this true?
Do you mean like as an active employee, not to give them health insurance?
Yeah. If I'm an employee and, hey, Kevin, if you don't want our insurance, I'll give you X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
Oh. Yes, that, that is a, a practice that does happen in other districts.
Can it be a mix of that? Can some, can you...
Not cash and lieu?
Oh, I'm...
That's what I asked, cash and lieu.
Cash and lieu?
Yes.
Pay in lieu of taking health insurance, right?
Today I got, today I got insurance, next year, I'm offered a certain amount of money to get off the plan. And I'll say, sure, give me the money, I'll go find my own insurance.
Cash and lieu.
No, it's not cash.
Cash and lieu? Am I mixing terms?
It, I, let's just get the, the functionality of it.
Yes.
So, someone's offered coverage here. They're an employee, they waive coverage, and as a result of waiving coverage, the district pays them a set amount of money. Is that, okay? Yeah. So, I, I, I know that as cash and lieu of benefits. I don't know if, you know, the term, terminology on this. So, it is a practice that some employers do. The part about a cash and lieu payment is that there is a sunk cost component to it. Meaning, you cannot say, well, you already waived this year, if you waive next year, you're not eligible for this. You have to treat all people who are similarly situated the same. So if we have, call it eighty-five percent of your population who takes the plan, that means fifteen percent of the population doesn't take the plan. That would be, I'll call it a hundred and fifty employees. So if you were to institute that program, automatically, you would have to pay those hundred and fifty employees whatever dollar amount that you had, which would add to the sunk cost. So currently, not paying them anything, then you would have to pay them something.
I, I would add, we do have the F A H P. Which does pay you not to take insurance if you choose your spouse's insurance. And it's fifty dollars per live, per month, who you take off the insurance. So we do have that, we just don't have, here's your X dollar amount for that.
I'm, I'm still struggling over the married couple one. Because actually, it would be better for them to go to work at a different district. and still take our insurance, and then they get, you know, go to a different plan, I mean, they can do, it, it just doesn't quite seem right that we're doing nothing for those roughly 60 couples. So I don't really want to just suggest a dollar amount, but in lieu of nothing else? And I guess I'm not sure if it would be the cash-in-lieu or how exactly that would work. But I think that would be one of the things that we need to augment our plan to not kick the married couples in the teeth because they both choose to be at our wonderful school district, so.
The one factor I think that's a little unique is that the married couples both have a post-retirement benefit. And so I think if I were making a recommendation, we'd probably have to not allow, if you took the in lieu of, you'd probably not be able to carry your health insurance, right? So if you get 10 sick days, we pay you 100 and something dollars, right, for that? And so that continues to happen. So if we're paying you not to take the insurance, you would have to, I think, give up that option, which is, in my opinion, way more beneficial than the cash-in-lieu. Like you can't, because then you're, I mean, I think you're double dipping there, if that makes sense? So I, I get it, like, yeah, okay.
Motion on the floor, and there's a second? Yes, please.
Does everybody understand the motion as it was read? I would, Jim. The motion on the floor is to approve the employee healthcare plan effective July 1st, 2024, as presented, okay? Commissioner Hayworth. Commissioner Hurt. Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Millard. Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Paul. Commissioner Ardray. Commissioner Dahmershausen. Commissioner Murray. That's the benefit of being president.
Yes.
The motion stands, five to four, in favor of approving the healthcare plan. Thank you.
Sorry, I jump back to the agenda. So in your packet, you see a recommendation for the proposal for a new principal at Roosevelt, Mrs. Kaminski. She comes to us from Beloit School District. She is an exceptional individual whom is really excited about the opportunity. The memo talks a little bit about her background and, and the process that we used in order to do that. I would lean to Dr. DeGraff for her leadership in the opportunity to set first preliminary interviews, screeners, second, a first round of in-person interviews, and then third, setting up a final interview process, which included the staff and families at Roosevelt Elementary School. And she came out there, unanimous choice.
I move to accept the recommendation.
Second.
So that was Myers and Paul?
Yes. How was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So just wanted to give you a real brief update. We, the, the actual survey is into printer. And now at the post office, we accept those, we expect the surveys to be hitting homes beginning next week. The survey was also sent out digitally to our own staff. As of today, we have over 300 responses from our own staff, and I believe it went out yesterday? What's today, yeah, it went out yesterday. So we'll continue to compile that information. What will happen is, the survey will close on May 20th. We will then meet with School Perceptions. School Perceptions will break down that data, and we'll get that information to you prior to the June 11th. Is that the next board meeting, June 11th? June 11th, board meeting. And at that point, we'll try to get that as far in advance, so you can kind of look through that, and then we'll provide a presentation about what the data is telling us in regards to the feedback we get from our staff, our families, and our communities. We're able to disaggregate that from all those different information. So again, we're excited about that work and that opportunity. We continue to meet as we start to redefine, you know, just some of the specific pieces in there. So we have a meeting coming up this week that will talk a little bit about what does the CTE spaces look like and how we might want to develop those. And so we have some staff members who are integral in that spot. So again, we continue to take information. Dan and I had an opportunity to meet with a new enrobbery group this week and share just kind of the big picture information. I have a couple of dates already this summer from other civic organizations that want to hear from the school district about what does this mean and what are our needs. So we'll continue to provide that opportunity and feedback. Patrick has a memo or that will go out, kind of just explaining to our public the survey and what's happening. And we continue to update our website so that if you do click on that QR code, it brings you back and it allows folks to look at any of the thousands of pages that the board members have reviewed in terms of the specific details. So we're on track, and we're looking forward to that information so we can make some good decisions before we, I don't know, recess, right? Kind of sit back for a moment in the summer.
The PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, May 6th at 4:30 PM here at the Educational Services Center. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, May 14th at 6:00 PM, also at the Educational Services Center.
I currently don't have any agenda items. If you have an item that you're interested, fill out the agenda form that you can get from the board clerk, who, what, where, how, and why. You want an item on the agenda, I'm sure we'll get some. There's probably some outstanding stuff we gotta address, and other than that, we are adjourned. Yeah, I don't want...